I'll bring this council meeting to order and ask you to please stand if you are able for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Welcome to our Linsburg City Council Meeting of June 3, 2024. We will now look at item number three, which is public input. Thank you. Now turn your attention to item number four, amendments to the agenda. Are there amendments?
There are.
Thank you. Turn your attention to item number five and want to call attention to our city clerk, Roxy Shugrit, who has been designated a master municipal clerk by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks Incorporated. In order to get that designation, she has to show significant contributions to her city, which I think we all see now on a regular basis, and there are certain educational objectives that she has to also obtain. So thank you for your efforts, Roxy, and congratulations. Now hopefully she doesn't, that doesn't mean she's going to want a raise. Thank you, Roxy, we appreciate it. Secondly, I want to take a couple of minutes just to talk about a treasure that we lost on May 9. We are all friends with Margaret Pressley, and we know what a wonderful person she was. You know, she was a social work professor at Bethany College from 1989 to 2011, and she went to Kansas State University until 2014. The very first time that I met her, it was a privilege and an honor, she invited me to speak to one of her classes, and immediately I could tell that her rapport with her students was extraordinary, and the respect that they had for her was very, very clear. They had an absolutely wonderful evening that evening with her class and with Margaret, and respected her from that moment on. She was instrumental in passage of the Child Abuse Reporting Act. That one thing, if that's all you did in your life, you did something significant. And she has a whole list of those things, but in that, it's untold good that she did for our city and our state and the entire Midwest, and we appreciate that, and we are proud to call her a friend, and she lived here with her husband, our good friend, our colleague, our council member John, council member John Pressley, and their two daughters, Cara and Macon, and all of extended family. We offer our deepest sympathy to the entire family from the city of Linsburg, and just know that, John, we will remember her and all of her good works. Thank you very much. We'll now turn our attention to item number six, the consent agenda. These items are routine, they're enacted by one motion, there'll be no separate discussion unless a council member so requests. Item A is the approval of the minutes, the regular meeting, May 20, 2024. Item B, payroll ordinance number 5485, and item C, purchase order ordinance number 5486. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, are there questions on the motion? Seeing no questions, we will ask our master municipal clerk to please follow.
Council members Peterson.
Epstein.
Vaneway.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Bruce.
Yes.
People.
Yes.
Pressley.
Yes.
Orman.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes. Thank you, council, thank you, Roxy. We'll now turn our attention to item number seven. Do we have any appointments this evening?
We do not, Mayor.
Thank you. Item number eight, Madam Administrator, do we have any committee reports?
We do not.
Thank you. Item number nine, is there any old business before the council?
There is not.
Thank you, we'll move to item number 10, new business. We have two items this evening. Item A is budget request presentation from the Linsburg Community Library, and I believe Susanna Swinson, our librarian, is here, welcome, Susanna. And Susanna, also, if you have board members you want to introduce, please do so.
No, some of them were planning, but must not have been able to come.
Okay, thank you.
Well, good evening, Mayor and council members. At the library, our mission is to welcome community residents and visitors of all ages to be engaged in the pursuit of lifelong learning. One of our busiest times for providing services just started. We have our kickoff party for our summer library program this Saturday passed, and we will be providing free events, reading challenges, and activities for everyone, all ages, through August 3 this year. In order to provide library services, which include traditional book circulation, interlibrary loans, e-library platforms, non-traditional library items like games, puzzles, and cake pans, computer, Wi-Fi, printing, and copying services, early literacy programs, after-school programs like Lego Club, remote work, meeting, and gathering spaces, the library requires sustainable funding beyond community donations. So that brings us to tonight's topic, the proposed budget for 2025 that the library board has approved for your consideration. So as I go through what I gave to you as part of your packet, feel free to stop me if you have any questions as we go along, otherwise I can answer questions at the end. So on page one, I have general information on library tax levies. Okay.
I'm gonna pull it up.
Sounds great. So. So in case you haven't heard before, I think I see one of you face, library tax levies are different than the general fund, so they have their own special line items, they're separate from everything else. Any general fund tax levies, that all goes to some, you know, other departments for the city, the library only receives funding from that library levy, mill levy line. And so I have like a picture on there that's from the 2023 adopted budget. Just kind of showing you how it works. And I'm very thankful for the consultants we get through our regional library system, which is South Central Kansas Library System. Their director is very helpful to help teach me how this works, so I can tell you how it works. They're a great resource. So as you can see, there's the funds that you have for taxes, and there's like the general fund, none of that ever goes to the library, and then the library has its own line, and that's where all of our funding comes from. And then further down there, we have, there's different statutes that govern library taxes, so it's, there's no tax levy that's limit, that's fixed by law, and so the city of Linsburg is responsible for levying taxes. We don't have a state limit lever, sorry, there's no library state tax levy limit for libraries in statute. And then sometimes there are charter or simple ordinances that limit library levies, but Linsburg does not have one. So that's kind of like this. On page two, this is the first bit of our proposed budget. You'll see that a lot of our income is proposed and budgeted at zero, and that is because those line items are not guaranteed, so we don't want to budget for them. So there's like card replacement fees, book replacement fees, none of that is guaranteed. Monetary donations are not guaranteed, other donations are not. On the 2023 actual, you can see there's a huge jump in the monetary donations between the 22 actual and the 23 actual. That is because of our building project fundraising that has begun, so that's why that is strange. And all of those funds are specifically for the building project, not for other services. Then, yeah, if you can see, we do, we do budget for sickles grant and aid, which is from the lead regional library system, and then the state grant and aid. Those are because those are non-competitive and guaranteed. The other grants we don't budget for because they're not guaranteed. And in there, yeah, the property tax distribution, that number is the same number that was approved last September for 2024, so we decided, with everything going on, we just wanted to stay basically where we're at, rather than requesting more. So on page three. Kind of the outstanding thing here that I saw that you might have interest in is, you'll see that in the proposed budget, there is zero put down for capital improvement. Now we are fully planning to be spending lots of money on capital improvement for the building project, but that is all being done separately, so we're not including the building project in our, in our regular budget. Other than that, I think everything is basically the same on that page. On page four, you'll see that there are zeros in our payroll. That is because when we do our actual budget, we break it out between net payroll and then the tax deposits and the unemployment tax and workers' comp and all like that. For the budget proposals, we use a gross payroll. So all of those items that are zeros are included in the $76,700. So that's not an actual net, that is a gross. And so best practices for libraries is to spend about 65% to 75% of operating expenditures from all income excluding capital improvement on salaries and benefits. This number is short of that, however, the library board decided that they did not want to increase staffing until after the building project. They wanted to get one thing done before adding more with that. So that's why that is. And then page five. Main here is on the transfer to capital improvement fund. You notice that that is often zero. Usually here, we only do transfers to capital improvement if there is a surplus, and we don't, we either receive more budget than we anticipated, or we don't use as much on expense as we thought we would. There is a, there is a statute that we need to not transfer more than 10% of income that's received from property tax distribution towards that. That number for this budgeted amount is 13,350. We went ahead and budgeted for transfer to capital improvement fund this year, partly in case there's any unforeseen changes with regular budget items like utilities and such with the building project coming, and we're just not quite sure where that should go in the regular line items. So that's one part. The other is, with the building project, we will either be depleting our capital improvement fund, which is very useful if there's any emergencies. We want to build that up after, so that once we have a new building, it's not like, oh dear, this broke, now we have no money to pay for it. So that'll either be to build the capital improvement fund back up, or to go towards expense. So total, since 1960, the library has provided access to resources and services beyond what patrons can afford on their own. The need for services, including reading materials, technology, program events, and more continues to grow and expand. So as such, we're very excited to be in the process of the building expansion and remodeling project, to be better equipped to meet those needs. We look forward to continuing serving our community well, partnering with others, such as yourselves, to be a thriving contributor to the excellent quality of life available in Linsburg. So are there any questions about any of that?
Thank you, Susanna. Questions from the council?
I'll pass one. On the property tax distribution, there are four columns, 22 actual, 23 actual, 24 amended and 25 proposed budget.
Yes.
There's a big jump in the property tax distribution from 23 to 24 is amended. Did we already approve that?
Yes, so the amended budget, we asked, I don't remember how much we asked for, but you gave us more than we asked for. So we amended it to adjust for how much that you were going to give us, rather than just have, well, we got this extra money, but we don't know what we're gonna do for it. So we have, that's, it was amended after September, we need to be excited about that.
Further questions?
And we do appreciate the increases in funding. For many years, we were, we were behind our comparable-sized libraries in the region, and now thanks to your support, we are much closer to being comparable, which means that we can provide comparable services to our community, so thank you.
Thank you, Susanna. Thank you for your presentation and your information this evening, and for the great job.
Oh, thank you.
Next, we will turn our attention to item B, which is the Linsburg Old Mill Swedish Heritage and Heritage Museum budget request. I think, Adam, are you, great, come on up. And you as well, anybody that you want to introduce, please do so.
Absolutely. Like I said, my name is Adam Prock, I'm the marketing communications director for the Linsburg Old Mill and Swedish Heritage Museum. Good evening, and thanks for taking some time to listen to our presentation, and in addition to our budget request, we want to give you a little bit of an update about the museum and where we are currently. First of all, I do want to recognize that Lenora Lyneau, our executive director, is also here, as well as two of our board members, we have Tim Stewart, and of course, on your council is Person Bruce. And of course, many of you also on the council, I know are volunteers and supporters of the museum in a variety of ways, and I want to say thank you for that as well. So we're, we have quite a few slides, but I'm gonna try to go through them quite quickly. It's best to say next or something. Okay. So just a quick overview, what we're gonna cover is just where we are currently with our structure, projects that we're working on, and what our grants and funding situation is. Next, please. Okay, so first off, to our current structure, for those of you who haven't been out to the mill before, a lot of people don't realize initially just how big it is. We are actually on 15 acres out there, and we have 10 total historic buildings on our museum campus, two of which are on the National Register of Historic Places. If you've ever had an older house and tried to take care of one older house, try taking care of 10, and that is a big part of our challenge and opportunity as a museum. Next, please. And to let you know about some of the changes that we've had regarding ownership, just before, we were about to hit 60 years as a museum, the ownership of our museum changed because it was previously owned, excuse me, by McPherson County, and McPherson County transferred ownership to a new independent nonprofit, this was in August of 2021. So we are now operating under a new name with, as the Linsburg Old Mill and Swedish Heritage Museum. Next, please. This is our current setup for ownership structure, we have a board of directors of eight. Just this year, we welcomed three new board members, who we are very grateful to have. As far as staff goes, we are currently two full-timers, that would be myself as marketing communications director, Lenora as executive director. We do also have capacity and quite honestly, the need for an additional full-time position, that would be our mission director, who would be primarily focused on fundraising, community relations, and grant rating. We do also have an intern who was from Bethany College and was with us all through the spring, and will actually, thanks to a grant, be able to continue into summer 2024 on a historic image database project. We do also have one part-time custodian. Next, please. We do have a current strategic plan that we're working off of for 2023, 2024, that is also available on our website, if you want to go more in depth and look at what those priorities are, but we'll give you a big overview here in our presentation. Next, please. So our big strategic goals are to build community, prioritize which buildings we are going to focus on for restoration and preservation, building our cultural heritage as a community, diversifying our programming, and ensuring the organizational stability of the museum, that's both financially and in terms of leadership. Next, please. So first off, we are working to increase the offerings in terms of events and exhibitions that we have available. Next, please. And as you can see, we've been working on that quite a bit. Obviously, they're ones that we've been doing for a long time. We have the 40th anniversary of Millfest this year, that is always on the first Saturday in May, and the Friday before that, we have Millfest for Kids. So this year, that brought in about 400 people to the community for Millfest, and during Millfest for Kids, we had more than 600 students and adults who were accompanying them as part of that event. In a few weeks here, we'll be part of the Midsummer's Festival, if you've ever seen the raising of the Midsummer's Bowl, that happens right on Heritage Square. An odd number of years, we are a big part of Spence Killings Fest as well, and Heritage Christmas, we have on the second Saturday in December as part of the St. Lucia events on that day. And actually, a new event that I should mention this year, we have the Marriage Christmas Coffee in the Train Depot, and I think that was a wonderful event, a good opportunity to connect the community as, with your constituency and have an opportunity to convert to them. I think it was quite popular. We've been offering Swedish genealogy workshops for a long time, but we're actually expanding those offerings now. We now also have one-hour genealogy presentations that we're doing that are on a wider variety of topics than just Swedish. So for example, we have one coming up that's on how to use the family search tool, and we had one recently that was about German genealogy. So those have been very popular as well. As part of the Arts Council, we were part of the Linsburg Cultural Program in February, and we were also, as part of the Starry-Sky Night, we offered our services on Heritage Square to turn out the lights and be a backup location for those who couldn't get it up on Corinata Heights. We are also working on an online speaker series, and as a typical one-off, this last year, we had an eclipse viewing party. We don't get that every year. So we had about 25, 30 people show up for that, and that was a great event. We also do have two new events that are in planning stages, so we aren't quite ready to share them yet, but just to give you an idea of everything we got going on. Next, please. One current temporary exhibit that we have going is this one called Skeleton Dog, is a mini-exhibit of some of the Bethany College collection, showing some of the objects and artifacts from that Bethany collection. Next, please. Sometimes those temporary exhibitions actually become a permanent one. This was in our main gallery, showing for the 125th anniversary of the Old Mill, and we got enough good feedback on it, and it was so useful to people to see that history timeline that we've opted to keep that as a permanent exhibition. Next, please. Just some of the partners that we work with here, I won't go into detail on all of them, but just know that these are partners that we work on on providing programming for project partnerships, to provide more accessibility for admission to the museum, and also make for a better visitor experience. Next, please. One of our other objectives was to increase attendance by 133%. Next, please. And on average, we have about 6,000 visitors a year. Our big accomplishment this year is that we are actually exceeding now our pre-pandemic attendance, with 7,043 visitors last year. That happened even though, at the same time, in February 2023, we actually doubled our our admission cost for adults. So it really shows popularity that even as we were having to increase the cost, we still had increased attendance. If I get it next. And this just gives the idea that showing our annual attendance increasing while our admission is, income is continuing to increase. You see in 2021, that was about 8,300, and it was more than 34,000 on that right-hand side. Next, please. Our sales revenue by increasing it by 55% is also one of our goals, and if you see the next, that represents going from just a little shy of 23,000 to more than 30,000 in sales revenue, so that would be like from gift shop and t-shirts, that kind of thing. Next, please. We're also working to grow our membership by 190%, increase community support. Show the chart on the next. And actually, since the time I sent this in, the membership number has become outdated because we got two more memberships in, so we are now at 164, and you can see on the right-hand side there, that includes memberships and one-time donations. The left-hand side of that is about 7,500, the right-hand side is more than 146,000 in donations from individuals and organizations of the community. Go to the next, please. And this just shows total income, how it has been increasing in terms of revenue year over year from 2021 through 23, that's about 379,000 on the right. Next, please. A big part of that has been some very generous donors from the community. This is the second year in a row that we had an individual donor come forward with the $50,000 match challenge campaign. It raised about $98,000 last year. This year, you'll see, we had 138 individuals and families and organizations who participated and raised nearly $88,000 to help us to continue. Next, please. We are also trying to increase our endowment by $1 million. This is an area of challenge. Who can go to the next one? The right-hand side of that will show where, those are showing the first four quarters of 2023, we don't have the numbers for first quarter 24 yet. That represents about $450,000, which is a steady increase, but our big goal is to increase that to 1.4 million. Our current focus, however, is just making sure that our real assets, the buildings, exhibits, and all of that are preserved and restored. Next, please. I kind of hesitate to put this slide up here because our intention is not to put it, anyone I kind of hesitate to put this slide up here because our intention is not to put anyone on blast, but I do think we need to know what the situation is with an important piece of funding for us. MacPherson County, after it made the transfer in 2021, finished out that year with their usual funding for that year. In 2022, all of these figures include 25,000 that they sent us for renting county records' archival space in our basement. So that went from 150,000, which represents about 46% of our budget in 2022. In this year that, I'm sorry, last year, that went to 100,000. In this year, it's 75,000, and we've been informed by the county that next year, they are planning to send us 25,000 for the archival rental space, and that is their plan for the foreseeable future. 25,000 represents about 7% of our budget, so it went from 46% to about 7%, which is a big part of why increasing our endowment is such an important goal that we have. So we do have some critical maintenance projects that we're working on. Go on to the next one. We just recently finished up this work on the upper exterior walls of the Old Mill. If you can show that. And this was done in fall 2023, using a local contractor, Perfect Blend, and a grant from Heritage Trust Fund. Go ahead to the next. These are current projects that are going on with Sprint Grant Funding. Our museum front porch just got wrapped up this last week. The Powerhouse to the Old Mill is going, just had the parapet walls repaired, and we've also noticed some exterior damage, so that's going to be repaired with Sprint Grant Funds. The Academy Building, which is the first public school building in the county, had new exterior paint done, and will have new roofing very soon. The one-room schoolhouse, the West Kentucky Schoolhouse, has had a new roof completed, and if you go over there currently and look at it, the sides have been scraped, but not yet painted, so still some work to do there, but it's all being funded. Next, please. We also have this great repainting with the 2023 Nut Grant for Pavilion Repainting. Next, please. And this is what it looks like afterwards. And go on to the next. We also, as part of that 2023 Nut Grant, are getting windows replacement back to more historically accurate windows, so you can see the before, and that's still in partial completion. It's going to be in the process, and it's waiting a little bit on what's in our next slide. As maybe you know, we have currently closed the pavilion for safety. In October of last year, we realized that there were some structural issues after an engineer's assessment. This really is our next major challenge. You'll notice that on the picture on the left there, those are our chains holding together the upper rafters of the Swedish Pavilion, and the leaning to the left that the building has been doing is up to 2 degrees, and that's a straight line down there, and you can see towards the bottom of that where it is actually bulging out visibly. You don't want...
Just to say on that too, though, that when that was moved from the college in the 60s, like we think it has been, it just hadn't been assessed, and so that was part of what the board decided to do and staff is assess that they'll lose to see where they were. So it's not, it's like, it's not a new problem, but it's just we've actually had engineers out to look at it and say, oh. And one of our volunteers looked at it and was like, hmm, something's happening there. And that's what they found, the children wire that have been holding it together for 50 years.
In the engineer's assessment, they actually used some historic photos of when the pavilion was moved from the Bethany Campus onto the museum campus in 1969. They were not using the correct kind of truck, honestly. The sides were actually hanging off slightly and creating bowing down, and they think a fair amount of the damage might have happened then, before it was even placed on the museum site. So as a part of our being safeguards of this historic legacy, that's like Kirsten said, you know, we were doing assessments of that, and that's when we found the issues with that, and out of an abundance of caution, that's why it's currently closed to the public. Go to the next one. So in January, we applied for 181,000 from the large Nut Grant Fund to cover the stabilization cost. We were not selected for the Nut Grant at that time. However, in April, we have applied for 200,000 in Community Service Program tax credits from the Kansas Department of Commerce. That should spur up to 285,000 plus in funding. That would cover all the stabilization and part of putting a new roof on the pavilion. We'll know about that in the next few months here, for sure, and be able to announce that. We feel very good about our application. We're using some fundraising consultants, and they, they said it was one of the best ones they'd read, so we feel very good that that's going to come through and help us to find this. Next, please. So a couple of really fun projects that we have going on. Recently got about $3,000 for the Historic Image Database Project. This is free for everyone to access, a public service, and people can approach us and include their own family photos and past database. It's been wildly successful. We have about 6,300 images on there. Some of those are books, and more than 151,000 views. You can see it right now on that website. And on this next one, is it set up to play the video? Oh, perfect, yes. If you can hit the playbook on that. So this is currently in development. This is one of our partners called Windtor, who's out of Europe. They're basically going to have a small add-on admission fee, very small, $5 per group. But basically, what you'll be able to do, it is like, is this would be what you're seeing on your device, and it actually, with those dots, scans the location, and you can see where it now brings up virtual elements that you can interact with. So for example, right there, you can tap on it, and it shows overlaid exactly that same view from 1920 as opposed to what you're seeing modern day. That button there shows you the actual sound of the roller mills as they're going, and as this turns around, it'll actually show you my favorite part of it. We took 360 video of the entire mill while it was running, so up, down, all around. So now you can, with this, you'll be able to walk through a virtual doorway, turn around, and then overlay exactly over the space, you can see it running any day of the year. I've often said that one of our biggest drawbacks as an institution is we can run it one day of the year, but the other 364, we can't show off our best feature. So this will really help out with that. Okay. Go ahead, on to the next one. We are working on our strategic planning going into the future after, or 2025 and after. These are based on assessments from Stephen Elliott in 2019, WSU Studies in '21 and '22, and Community Conversations. We have had some staff shortages, so currently, the five-year development plan for '25 to '30, and the 25-year plan up to 2050 are still undeveloped, but we'll definitely show that out as soon as we have it. Next one. So now talking about grants. We brought in more than half a million in grants last year. That represents 11 for 11 on successful attempts. So if you look at the graph here, that's a major spike in what we've been able to bring in. That line will go down. Most of that comes from, we'll show you here on the next slide, which was being a Sprint Grant recipient, only the top 8% out of 228 applicants actually received this. We got a quarter million in funding. And I'll let you look through that entire list at your convenience, but you can see just the long list of everything that has already been completed and is going to be done off of that quarter million grant. It's been absolutely critical piece of funding that we got. Next, please.
Just to say on that, that's a one-time only thing.
That is a one-time only thing.
That was public money left over that the state had, and they gave it as a one-time shot at that one being happening again.
Yeah, yeah, they basically were wanting to make sure that money got out the door before the federal government said, hey, why don't you give us that back? So that, that was very fortunate that we were able to get in there. But yeah, like you say, it's a, it's a one-time deal, but it's really making a difference for, for some really necessary improvements. Some other real quick grants that we've gotten, we were approved for a Google Ads grant, so we get up to $10,000 per month in targeted advertising. We had almost $3,000 to expand and continue our Historic Image Database Project. We've applied for a Kansas Arts Commission grant for 25,000 for general operating funds. And I'll mention two I didn't get on here. We applied last Friday for another 20,000 in unrestricted operational funding from a different grant source. Go ahead. And just to give you an idea of like what all of this work is actually doing for the local community, there's about a dozen local and area Kansas businesses and contractors, and not just Kansas, just very local areas in Kansas here. Linsber, Newton, Saline, MacPherson are a real focus of the ones that have come through. I'll let you explore that. Other benefits to mention, you do get a lot of visitations bill over from us as a museum, particularly from kids' events and opportunities such as Millfest for Kids. It's worth mentioning, too, the benefits of mental health and well-being. There's even a NIH study from 2022 that was showing how you get well-being, restorative effects, people having reduced anxiety, self-fulfillment from being able to visit museums. Museums are actually the most visited cultural experience worldwide, and they really help to add perspective and meaning to people's lives. In a more specific way, we support local area artists and creators. In our gift shop, we focus on Kansas and local businesses and creators. In our events, we have about 45 just with Millfest of local artists who present and have an opportunity to sit. We have guided tours by appointment, which draw a lot of people here. We also have programming space. So for example, we recently hosted the Kansas Anthropological Association. I will mention that Swedish dancers no longer rehearse in the pavilion for some obvious reasons, but even down to the recent birdwalk, use the campground as parking space. So we offer a lot to our community that way. We can also offer community presentations, talking about our history. Basically, we can bring the history to you. So we talk to civic clubs, we can stay with AdHoc. We're even going to present to Bethany Home later this month and give them a virtual tour there personally. Okay, we're almost to the end here. Just another quick, few quick items of interest here. Last year was our 125th anniversary of the mill. This year is 120 years of the Swedish Pavilion. We got our first-ever award for our virtual tour from the Kansas Museums Association. Locally, we have an Old Mill Mint Flavor Partnership that we had, so we really like working with local businesses in this way. We expanded with the local Linsber Coob Club. Sorry, I'm mispronouncing that. But we now are able to have Coob included as part of their admission at no extra cost. We're working on an Old Mill History Book with author Tom Holmquist and local photographer Tate Tubbs. You probably will know both of their work, and we're, I recently got the last chapter from Tom, so we'll be editing that, and we're really excited about being able to present that. We're getting a lot of media attention. Notice, notice to you there is television, radio, Milling and Bacon News Magazine, and even MSN.com. Okay, so all that brings us to, because of our benefits of the community, the health and birth that we've been showing as a museum, but also with the recognition of the challenges that we're facing in terms of funding, our request would be for $50,000 from the city to help to continue to support these community benefits from the museum. Thank you very much for your time, your attention, and all of your support. What questions can I ask for you?
Thank you, Adam. Questions from the council? All right.
No questions, but just because it was very thorough and so exciting to see, and actually, I'd like to say the same thing, I just appreciated your presentation as well. So really great stuff happening, and it was exciting.
Thank you.
Councilor Peterson?
Very nice job presenting. Thank you for all this information. The one thing for not only the taxpayers that may contribute, but also the individual donors is you've listed all, a lot of successes as far as grants and funding increases, but I'm curious as to the expense side of the equation that's not included in this, and are we making enough to pay for operations? I guess the biggest thing, biggest question I'll have moving forward is, is there a clear path to success of being able to sustain this on an ongoing basis financially?
Right, and I think a big part of that is increasing the endowment. That gives us more of a long-term sustainability as opposed to getting us through the next year, and the next year, and the next year, which of course, we also have to do. I think people are coming out more and more, as you're seeing with the increase in our income year-over-year. I think a big part of it is going to also be reaching out to corporate sponsorship and making sure that we have that kind of support. But it is a true challenge to have the county making its decision as to the levels of funding it's provided. Going from 46% of our budget from county to 7%, that's going to be a major challenge for any organization, no doubt. But I truly believe this community and that there are both individual donors and organizations that we are continuing to reach out to, to bring in, increasing that endowment and making sure we have sustainable funding.
I think one of the things that's important to those, it's, and I say easier around quotes because it's easy for me to say if I didn't write the grants, but it's easier to get money for buildings and things, structural things like that. What's hard is getting money for everyday operations. And so that's where, honestly, I really, I know, I'm in the weeds, I know, because I know, I think I knew all this in here, but three years, we've been doing this, I mean, I was sort of along with that. So I mean, when you look at the accomplishments, three years, it's kind of amazing to me of diversifying the funding as much, because there was no diversification, you know, in the Swedish nonprofit in 2021. So it's based off of getting a knowing value, but it's pretty amazing what you guys have accomplished, so.
And, and I would note too that, you know, last year, this was Carolyn presenting here. Unfortunately, she left Kansas City, along with your other lost person on City, and we've been two full-time since then. There's definitely a work for three. So yeah, I think the point is well taken. I think the biggest part of what we're hoping for and asking for is how we can keep this sustained and going as we continue to grow the organization and those funding sources. Just as a, for example, I used to work for MacPherson College, and they recently had their, was it a billion that came through? Half a billion? I know from having worked there that that was a 15-year process of developing those donors. So you don't get those kind of results, like you say, in three years. We're getting there, but it is something where we are hoping for and asking for that city support and help in the meantime, while we continue to build. Thanks.
Further questions? Seeing no further questions, thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
And thank you, Lenora, and for being here this evening as well. That concludes our new business. I'll turn our attention to item 11, executive session. I don't believe we have a need for an executive session this evening.
That's right.
Thank you. And item 12, other business. Seeing no other business to come before the council this evening, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So much.
A motion and a second to adjourn. All favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Or no, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, council.
Thank you, man.
Some more business this evening.